The May 8th, 2018 workshop with the Oshkosh Common Council to discuss ambulance contracting with outlying communities and we will conclude at 5:45 because of the council meeting. So Chief Franz, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, I'm going to start with a little background regarding the current contract and the communities that we serve and what the current contract period is and what we're charging. So, we're currently providing service under contract to the 10 outlying communities, the towns of Algoma, Black Wolf, Nakaimai, Amro, Rushford, Utica, Poygen, Winnicott, the city of Amro and the village of Winnicott. First, we started this service in 2004. The current contract period that we have is from January, started in January 1st to 2014 through December 30th of this year. The current contract is based on, was based on an initial cost of $1.35 per capita and we call this an availability charge, but it's really the difference between it was at that time revenues collected and actual cost. Payments are made in arrears. The final payment for this contract will actually be due in 2019, so we will bill them in '19 for this service year. The contract includes, currently the contract includes an annual increase based on the previous year CPI-U. So, we would evaluate that CPI-U in August and that would allow us, that would be based on what the allowable increase of that per capita charge was. So, in 2017, the rate is $1.43 per capita. Final payment for '18 will increase based on the CPI-U of August of 2018 for the previous 12 months, which would give us an estimated subsidy due for the contract area in 2016 of approximately $36,000, depending where that CPI ends up being. The surrounding community clients are also billed for service every time we respond and transport someone and then they also pay an additional non-resident fee charge on, above what city residents are charged. So, our contract methodology was based on total ambulance service operating costs less revenue equals net operating cost. So, then the net operating cost is divided out by the entire population, the city plus the contracted area, which derive that per capita cost. That's where that $1.35 had started at the beginning of this contract period. So, the current subsidy per capita cost based on the CPI-U, however, did not increase at the same rate as our actual cost and there's several factors related to that. Our current actual net cost per capita we're estimating at this year to be approximately So, how is this total operating cost calculated or what do we include in our operating cost for providing EMS transport services? We have three full-time paramedic units that, so that's 18 personnel equals three shifts times two medics per unit. Then also with that, that includes all of the wages and benefits for those personnel, insurance, and an additional 2.7 full-time equivalent personnel to cover leave times such as vacation, sick leave, et cetera. So, just with that, the people on the ambulance were looking at 20.7 positions and then the budgeted cost including benefits for the battalion chief of emergency medical services covering administration and training for it. Then also the paramedics not assigned on an ambulance, the primary ambulances on a given day are paid a premium, 4% over their base wage. And we also then, we have four cross-staffed ambulances, we call them, that go into service when the three primary ones are on a call. We also include the part of the cost for our mechanic, including benefits or the share for the maintenance or repair of the ambulances. So, those are the personnel costs we have in there. In addition to that, we have the ambulance vehicle cost, which includes vehicle replacement. So, that's the cost advertised over 10 years. That's how we finance those in the CIP. Also, vehicle repair, maintenance cost and fuel, which through our city garage, we can track fuel costs pretty accurately. The major equipment we have on them, heart monitors, people ask, do we have defibrillators on there? Yes, and they do quite a bit more than that. The stretchers for carrying people, other patient movement devices, other non-disposable equipment. And then disposable equipment, probably the most expensive piece in there is medications and then oxygen therapy equipment, bandaging and so on down the line is also included in all this. You know, this is somewhat of a busy spreadsheet that we have here, but this brings together all of our cost for the breakdown by the upper left corner is what the cost is for a primary med unit than what it costs for the cross-staffed ones. And big reason why the cross-staffed ones are so much less expensive is because we're already paying for those firefighters there and their service, we're just paying for that paramedic premium pay. As you can see, that's a pretty cost-effective way of having four backup ambulances. Then the spare ambulance unit, those are the ones that we have on standby service for when we have maintenance, repair issues and also the two of those that we use for covering special events. Putting all of those costs together, I should have brought my glasses with me, I'm sorry. That I didn't, gives us a gross operating cost of $2,338,000 given year and then we subtract in the lower line out the revenue that's calculated from that and leaves us what our net operating cost is.
So, that $30.30, Chief, is what we basically pay, bill out per hour to the townships?
No, that's, well, that's what our total operating, net operating cost is per hour over the entire population, including the city and the towns. So, looking at how is that, just some of the details of the operating cost calculated and the personnel detail, I included this in here. I'm not going to spend a lot of time with that, but it's mainly just from an illustration standpoint so that you can see that we thoroughly cover all of the cost of the personnel assigned to this, right down through their benefits and break it down by the different positions. So, through the firefighter, paramedics, the cross-staffed units, that would be the equipment operator and firefighter that are assigned to the fire companies that, and the premium pay that we have for those folks. Then an additional cost that's on there is people that are not assigned to either a cross-staff or a primary ambulance that day because we do have firefighters that we still and are paying a premium pay for that when they're on their days off of the ambulance assigned to a fire company.
Are there any questions about the methodology? Because that's really the core of what we're approaching with the, with the outlying communities because that's sort of at the heart of what we're doing.
Yeah, with a new chief coming on board who has an expansive medical EMS background, from what we're being told.
No, he actually-
So, that being said, has he seen any of these documents?
No. The idea was because of the contract ending very shortly, we have a-
Yeah, we got till December and he starts in June.
No, no, we-
When's the notification period?
We notified them in August.
Okay.
So, the chief does have background in EMS, but the idea was to get this going. This was on-
But this is a four-year contract that he could be saddled with, that if there's issues or concerns he may have that he can address.
Over the course of the contract, the methodology is something that we can take a look at.
Right.
Tim, you may want to-
And I'm not, you know, and I'm not questioning that, the methodology or even the calculating because I think it is important. I just think with a new chief coming in and coming in in June and our contract's not up till December, and I understand they need it for their budget purposes too. I think he needs to at least weigh in on it a little bit.
Our obligation is that we provide the municipalities with this information in August because they're putting their budgets together for the next year. The idea behind it is that this would give the chief an opportunity to take a look at what options are out there. He does have some experience with an EMS service. It's not as elaborate because his current agency does not provide transportation just the way that is and they don't do it multi-jurisdictional, they simply are within their own area. But I think he has enough to be able to understand the basics of this. We reached out, I can't remember, Councilor Mugger, were you at the long-range finance last week?
No.
Okay. The long-range finance committee asked, well, what do you want us to do? And we're like, we'd like you to take a look at the methodology so that as we move forward on this, are there any other adjustments that we may want to consider down the road that what I think would take some longer-term approaches? That's what we feel is, would be necessary. The finance director has looked at this with Tim, Tree is not here this evening, but she took a look at this and she and Tim spent a couple of months going over this and felt that this was the appropriate methodology to keep it more up-to-date on an annual basis rather than letting CPI-U be used and essentially falling behind.
So, we are doing something different than we've done-
Correct.
Years past.
Yes, this is not the same contract that we would propose.
Because we're behind. I mean, if you take a look at that slide with the cost, maybe you want to go back just before you started getting into the-
Probably number two.
Deep dive with the numbers. Yeah. Keep going.
Yeah, probably slide two or three.
There we go.
Yep, there we go.
The current net actual cost is $2.86 and we're charging $1.35. That's where our shortage is because our-
We're at $1.43 right now.
I'm sorry.
It'll go up. It started with $1.35 and-
Right, and it goes up.
And I'll, I'll jump back to where we were, getting at, so why we propose changing this and why that, what changed over this time period, that why that original contract methodology that worked, the previous contract and this last one no longer does. Just one of the things that, and then the question comes from, where do all these, where do the calls come from? And so, we've shared that with you and obviously the greatest percentage of the calls is within the city itself and the contract area accounts for about 12%. And that's stayed relatively stable as far as a percentage. Total volume of calls obviously is going up, but the actual contract area was 12.89% in '13 and roughly the same now, but volume continues to go up. So, then the other thing that we took a good solid look at is then where does the revenue come from? The total receipted revenue for 2017 was $2.232 million. That is gross receivables. Then we also have to pay, we pay just over 5% to our billing agent for that. City calls accounted for 1.894, or 84% of the revenue. The contract area, 9.9% and an additional 1.6% from the subsidy or the availability fee. So, total contract area is $256,842, or about 11.5% of our revenue. Transports out of the city, those are the transports where we take people to Madison, Milwaukee, et cetera, accounted for 6% of the total revenues.
Is that number growing?
The transports, no, it's actually stayed relatively stable over the years for the numbers that we've had. I don't know if it'll continue that way, but for the last few years it has.
Our run volumes are really what's driving-
Yeah, 911 call run volume is increasing and I'll show you that and part of it is you'll see in the billing demographics of the growth in Medicare and Medicaid. Just one of the things that, this chart that I'm showing you right now, the important thing to note here is that we grossly bill out almost $4.5 million, but as you can see, our receipts are quite a bit less than that. And one of the primary reasons behind that is that third column there is mandatory adjustments and where you'll see the bulk of that is Medicare and Medicaid. And Medicare and Medicaid have not increased what they have paid us through the life of these contracts and we are seeing more and more of a shift of our patients going to Medicare and Medicaid.
When it comes to the outlying communities or the contracted communities and we take a hit in the city of Oshkosh on our receivables for Medicare, Medicaid, or when they don't pay or they short pay, do the contracted communities, those same, the people who you transport from those communities, if we have a shortage or a shortfall on those billables, we're taking the hits still on that or?
That shows up in the net cost. So, the net cost, everybody pays for the net cost.
Yeah, we pool everybody into-
That loss into there.
We're consistently, we're all losing the same proportion.
And that's where I was going with that, making sure that those communities are paying for their portion of that loss.
Yes, and then, and I said, they are also charged non-resident fee in addition to the subsidy. So, what we get from them shows up in revenue and also in transport revenue as well as the subsidy. And looking at just where the money comes from overall, you can see that, probably a better slide that I'll show you is the next one, is the payer mix. To keep this moving so we don't run out of time, commercial insurance is what people with health insurance, is a simple way of saying that. 2012, we had 13.88% of our people overall that had it. Now, we're down to 11.84%. Medicaid, 8%. It's up to 12.85. Medicare, 39 to 42%. And slightly down in private pay, but the important thing to note is we've had a shift from people going from having insurance to Medicare, Medicaid because of our aging population, which is another reason why our call volume is increasing. And we're just, the folks that we're serving, you know, even though the population hasn't increased, the demand for their service has. And by moving more of our patients into Medicare, Medicaid, we have those mandatory write-offs. So, there is the reason why that in the last five years compared to the previous five years, why that CPI-U isn't moving our revenues up as quickly as our expenditures are going up as it has in the past. So, that is why we propose changing our methodology. But just a general, another thing of concern is with the contracted area, where do our ambulances spend most of their time? Because I know that's a question that all of you have. Of the total unit hours in a year, and you have to think about the whole year, there's 8,760 hours in a year. 14.4% of that, of that time is used in the city, 3.6% in the contract area and out-of-city transports, 2.3%. It leads to a little bit of a busy, but you know, when you look at the revenues versus actual time spent on it, and this is going to probably be more significant in there because you have to remember that our people that are assigned to ambulances are not just paramedics, they are also firefighters. So, what would appear to be downtime, standby time, unused time, is their time as a firefighter and the majority of that is actually paid for through the services here. If you look at it, actual time on calls, the city is drastically ahead on cost. So, what we're proposing to, in the next contract, is to change that calculation so, again, stick with the operating cost, same methodology for how the costs are determined, adding all those factors in that we shared with you to begin with, which leaves our net operating cost. Then the net operating cost is divided by the entire population, question that, how we look at it overall, city plus outlying municipalities and that leaves us what the net cost per capita is. So, as we said, in, it was based on that cost per capita in 2013, the annual increase was tied to CPI-U, but it was adequate, but it is not keeping up. So, Medicare, Medicaid have not increased their reimbursement rate, that's why that's a problem. We haven't seen a significant, we've seen a significant shift in patients to Medicare and Medicaid, that's referred to our payer mix. In the past, as our call volume increased with the payer mix that we had, it was keeping up with operational cost along with that increase in CPI. One of the things that CPI doesn't include though is healthcare cost, so that's why it stays artificially low. So, we're still seeing a growth in calls, but the, you know, we're having a lower reimbursement rate per call. So, what we propose is to utilize the existing cost methodology, continue to bill one year in arrears because that's, and you'll see that's probably a better thing for us as far as, because it's going to be based on actual cost and revenues. So, we're looking at net cost equals estimated year-end in current budget less estimated year-end revenue as submitted in our preliminary budget. So, we would set that net cost per capita based on our actual year-end estimate, which is pretty close usually that we have in August, less that revenue. So, it isn't going to be based on any outside artificial number like CPU, it's going to, CPI, it's going to be based on actuals. And then by then billing in arrears, that gives us that opportunity then to really collect on what that is versus any sort of an estimate. So, in August, we send out the notice to communities on the subsidy due based on that per capita calculated.
Now, is that kind of a negotiated thing with them or is this kind of like, this is it, take it or leave it, type of mentality? I mean-
Yes. I mean, it's not like-
It's a little both.
It's a little bit both.
Yeah, in the past, we really haven't, you know, said, the one thing about this, this process as, you know, one of our guiding principles is very transparent, our budget, you know, is very public. It's, this is all substantiated in here, so, you know, we're looking at, you know, they can see what our costs are, they can see what our actual revenues are. Everybody is sharing to make up the difference.
True, because with all these, you know, with the city and a village and then townships, they all have to agree on this methodology and basically agree-
Correct.
Every town, every organization has to agree on this.
And if they don't, they're out already.
Yeah, they can choose, choose not to and try to find service somewhere else.
Again, even though we've got superior service and quality, we can't use this as a profit center. It's again-
We, we are limited and-
In our revenue capacity.
Correct.
And I guess my question is, okay, so, when we look at those charts and I'm sure we can probably break down even further, within the city, like what percentage is going to like, obviously hospitals and CBRS and places that we may not necessarily have payment in lieu of taxes, those pilot agreements? Is that something that we're seeing more of elsewhere to kind of handle some of that mismatch with Medicare and Medicaid shortages?
We're seeing more demand in some of the CBRFs and some of those facilities, but I don't believe that we necessarily get a pilot from all of them, you know.
I think Evergreen.
So, Evergreen is one that I know that, you'd have to ask the city manager, I'm not sure which other ones do.
I would think that hospitals are faced the same thing we are, Medicare, Medicaid and having to take care of people who have no insurance, so they're-
And that's why everybody's health insurance is going up. And here though, we need to still cover our cost in that. So, going back to what we would propose here is that with this new methodology, this year it's set at $1.43, so that what we would look at is our estimate based on what we're looking at, what our costs are going to be in 2019, that it would go to $4.10, which is a 287% increase. And then the total subsidy estimate would be $104,000. So, they are facing a significant increase in what we are proposing. We've had some initial discussions with them, but it's relative to them, our budget's big, theirs are smaller, but as percentages, they have, they have a difficult time fitting all of their increases in, but my initial discussions are that, you know, this wasn't fully out of line, you know, that they were, you know, believed that, you know, they were interested in moving forward depending on what the council's wishes are with this. So, with this, they pay essentially the same as what every, the people in the city, everyone in the contract area, the difference comes out to be $4.10. So, but some other, does anybody have any questions about that or?
The way I look at it, our residents have been picking up this subsidy and it's, we need to get that going and it's really because of the net cost because we were increasing our net cost based on an expenditure rate and while expenditures have gone up greater than CPI, the revenues have been just plummeting because that payer mix. I mean, you saw that Medicaid, we have a 50% increase in the volume of our payers that are on Medicaid now and about a 15% reduction in people who are covered by general insurance. And that's, when you look at that statistic and just see how few people are paying that are insured, it's primarily Medicare and Medicaid. It's just the nature of that beast and that's the cost we need to pass on. And I mean, you're a council member, you could be a council member here, a council member in Amro or one of the towns, you see these things coming, but are they any different? I mean, we see these losses in revenues all the time. Your colleagues, your counterparts in these other municipalities, they're in the same boat as we are, they're in the same boat as you are, they, they understand this.
The positive with this change in methodology, methodology is that if that gap continues to widen, we're not going to fall behind as it is currently set up. It's going, it's going to keep up with that. And when we're probably, you know, it's going to go up significantly in 2009, our net cost of a few changes with our personnel costs that are going to bump that up a little bit, but we're probably behind right now, but two years ago started falling behind by about 50 cents and then a little over a dollar now, so that's why we need to get, get caught back up again. So, just in general, again, a little bit of a review of, you know, where the time is spent on calls versus the revenue. City and contract area of the total unit hours in a year, 20.3% of the time the ambulances are engaged in being, treating patients and transporting them. A little bit of a breakdown, 14.4% is in the city, 3.6% in the contract area, 2.3%. I hear, what good is that for us to do this? And we're not just, we're in it to provide a service, but it also needs to make economic sense. But you can see then in the contract area, our ambulances are out there 3.6% of the time and bring in 11% of the total revenue that we get. So, that's a fairly good return on our time spent out there. Same with the long-distance transports, it's 2.3% of our time and 6% of the revenue that we receive for that. Main reason why we want to do it is because we, this is a service that we need, but the positive about doing this is there is an associated revenue with it. Now, standby time, you'll see there that 78%. I just want to let you know something about that, that you say, wow, that's not good utilization of our staff or people, but that 20.3%, you can add another 10% to that for their reporting and everything, patient care reports that need to be completed after that. That standby time also includes all their training time, doing building inspections in the community, training for firefighting, maintaining the fire stations, the equipment, so it isn't just waiting for a call. And that time is also, that's what's beneficial purely to the citizens in the city of Oshkosh because it's also availability again for fire service. So, how do we prove that or is this just looking at being in ambulance transport at all? Is it beneficial for the city? No, it's an essential city service that we have to provide, but by the city providing it, you're in control of the quality and of the service overall. And combining EMS and fire service is just a natural fit because of mission and service and I'll give you an example of a vehicle accident that we provide, the patient care, the extrication, the fire, everything works hand in hand, it's a coordinated effort. And all of our personnel are- And all of our personnel are cross-trained to perform multiple functions. Some cities do not pay or do not do that and they pay separately for those positions of perform each of these functions. So, that sounds great, but how does this work out financially? And so, looking at, in addition to the ambulance service that received, the city has the personnel assigned in the primary ambulance available for other duties. Though the city receives 6,003 unit hours or 36,000 man-hours, currently at 12% of the actual cost of that because that's what the difference is between the revenue and that personnel cost is. The proposed contract will reduce this cost down to 7%. This reduces the cost of fire protection to our community. And a way to really measure that or gauge that is to benchmark it to another community. An example that I'd give you is the city of Appleton, they don't provide ambulance transport and they report a per capita cost for their fire department at $153.74, which in, they reported as being the lowest, but that's a gross charge, but they don't have the revenues that we have, so there is no net really for them to report. And they have 1.28 personnel per thousand of population. Oshkosh has a net cost per capita of the fire department due to our ambulance revenues that we generate of $146 and we provide 1.63 personnel per thousand. So, we actually have a lower net cost and we have a greater firefighting force available. And you can say, well, yeah, but they're on the ambulance calls, you know, they are 20% of the time, but 80, you know, 79% of the time, we still have them available for all of their firefighting duties at currently 12 and we're going to drop that down to 7%. So, that just kind of wraps everything up in a nutshell of the overall value of, you know, and it's, number one, it's an essential service and we provide a really great quality service, but it also has this added benefit of being a, a financial benefit to the city.
I just ask a, a follow-up question, Chief. So, on those increases on the, the Medicaid, Medicare and our aging population increases, are there case studies where this community paramedicine, like an extra certification, that helps to reduce some of those repeat type calls?
Yes, there are, there's some pilot studies going on. One in the state that I'm aware of is West Alice, Wisconsin, where they're partnering with one of the local hospitals and, and they're actually paying for that program. The hospitals are, the hospital is paying for the fire department staff to, the idea is, it is two names for it, community paramedicine or mobile integrated healthcare. And, and visiting folks when they're first discharged from the hospitals, also some of the people that we see on a regular basis to try to reduce the call volume or stabilize it. I don't know that we'd see it go down a lot, but I think that's one of the things that I would expect the new chief to be looking at. That's on our strategic plan to look at doing that. The state has just passed legislation that empowers and enacts paramedics and the next step is to have a standardized curriculum and education for this. And so, looking at doing that is one of the things that we would do in the future here to try to can, also control our volume and cost and keep that availability as it is. Because that number that you see at 20%, we're, we're doing well, it's a national standard on, on unit hour utilization, that once you start getting up into the 23% range, you start stressing your system and 25% really starts causing problems. So, we don't want to see our ambulances jump up into that range. Either your choices then are adding more staff or doing what we can to keep those numbers in the range they are right now.
So, we're getting good value out of providing the ambulance service for other communities though because a community that doesn't provide that service, you go to that same chart and it's 100% of the time is spent on standby. Now, the truth is they're doing the inspections and the training just like we are, but you get, we're 20% more efficient. Now, it's more costly on a gross basis, but on a net basis, it's less expensive and that's really the core of it. And that's where I think the finance director Larson and Chief Franz spent a lot of time because Trina wanted to make sure that she felt comfortable that she was okay with this and her absence doesn't mean anything other than she's at a conference. But she, she spent a lot of time with the chief to make sure that she understood it and she's comfortable with that. When we bring the contracts forward to approval, Trina can be here and be able to explain that, but.
And one thing in closing, you know, we have to be aware of dollars, but having used the service twice, once my mother, once my grandson, the response time is phenomenal. Quality of service, there's, I don't think anyone that does it any better. And I think the, seeing them in action, especially with a small child and an elderly woman, your guys know how to, how to ease the tension, they know how to calm the people and they're, it's great.
Do you, are you looking for a consensus to move forward with this methodology or are you looking, are you going to put something back on the council agenda for discussion or?
We would come back to have the council approve us bringing these contracts forward to the other communities. But before we did that, obviously this is where we, we wanted to get a lot of the questions and certainly if you look at this a little more and, and hear some other things, please let us know.
Yeah.
But I think the methodology is pretty tight and I think we're going to be patient to, to get them to approve it. Chiefs reached out to a couple of the municipalities and typically take a leadership role in coordinating for the smaller municipalities and for the most part, their initial reaction was pretty favorable. You know, little sticker shock, but I think they understand the reality.
Things are going, all right.
And I appreciate the mayor's comments and as I said, going back to, I know that this was mostly to prove that financial dollars and cents, but the most important thing for me is service quality and that's because the reason why that quality is there is I'm proud of the people we have, they're the, some of the best paramedics I think you can find anywhere.
We're dealing, we're dealing with people.
And, and they're great dealing with people. They, they fulfill our motto of being nice and, and, but their technical competency is, is second to none. And just, just one thought that I wanted to add, that you may hear in other communities that they pay more per capita, but when they do, not too far away from here, if I could add that in, that's.
Go ahead.
That's important that, just to the south of us, in a, it's a matter of economies of scale. North Fond du Lac provides service to the area that.
Town of Friendship.
Town of Friendship. And Van Dyne Fire Department serves a town in Winnebago County and it, down there and they say, well, down there it's $20 a person. Well, part of the problem is they have a population probably about 5,000 or 6,000 to spread this cost over and the cost and, and lower call volume and revenue. So, their net cost is higher and then they have that net cost spread out, they can only divide it out probably for about 6,000 people. So, obviously that's, that's why.
Their standby time cost is.
Is, is much greater.
All right.
Councilman at six o'clock.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Good job. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local.